Good afternoon, trustees, good afternoon administrators, good afternoon members of the public who may be listening to us. Welcome to this Board of Trustees Meeting for the June of August. It is four thirty, we are in session. Catherine, roll call please.
Yes ma'am, Jennifer Baker.
Here.
Jeff Dodd.
Here.
Elizabeth Goff, we believe is still absent. Kyle Iverson.
Here.
Rafael Rios.
Here.
Michael Baldini.
Here.
And Rosario Singura.
Here.
Thank you.
Trustee Dodd, would you please do us the honors and do the pledge of allegiance?
Sure, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Party with stands. With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. So we are adopting the agenda, does anybody have any objections or additions, additions to the agenda?
None.
Mr. Kazan.
So did I hear trustee Baldini to approve the agenda as is?
Uh huh.
Second.
Second by trustee Iverson. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so agenda is approved as is. We are now going to go to closed session. Items on the closed session are just one. Two point one conference with labor negotiators. We're hoping to be back by four forty-five, should be easy and quick. So, that's where we're going right now.
There is no public comment on
on the item, so.
Actually, you could call for, oh, I see, yes, you're recognizing him even though it wasn't there, so we didn't receive no public comment, correct?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
No public comment on the item, and so we go to closed session. We'll see you in a bit. We are reopening the public the public meeting. Welcome, everybody, thank you for being here, we have no items to report on closed session. And so we're gonna go to three point one. And public comment. This public comment opportunity is governed by the State of California Brown Act. By definition, this is an opportunity to hear concerns, perspectives, and different vantage points. The board will let the A goal under the Brown Act engage in any level of conversation or discussion. But we look forward to this opportunity to gather community input. At this time, the Board of Trustees will devote up to fifteen minutes to review comment to the Board of Trustees regarding any subject not appearing as an agenda item for this meeting, but over which the board has jurisdiction. The public may request that the board place an item related to the business of the district on a future board agenda. No addition or discussion will occur at this time on such items. Review of each comment shall no longer, should be no longer than five minutes. We have received no public comments. So we go to four point one. And four point one is a resolution honoring outgoing student trustee Pablo De Leon. Did Pablo make it to the meeting? Catherine?
I do not see him present.
Are you gonna open the resolution?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, here we go.
Thank you. And I will not read, well, actually, it's a short one, so we'll read I'll read the whole resolution. Whereas Pablo Leon was selected to serve the student as the student member of the Napa Valley College Board of Trustees and represent the Associated Students of Napa Valley College to bring positive change in the college community as a student leader from May twenty nineteen through July twenty twenty. And whereas Pablo worked tirelessly in his advocacy for student success and his thoughtful approach has helped him to attain personal and professional goals while holding himself to the highest standard of behavior as an elected official. And whereas Pablo recognized the importance of the Napa Valley College's role in the statewide community college system and his collaboration and contributions as a member of the Legislative Affairs and audit and finance in the real property committees. And whereas Pablo is influential and has strong desire to make an impact upon the world. He was instrumental in enhancing the student-centric focus of the board, asked thoughtful and provocative questions and collaborated effectively with the Associated Students of the Napa Valley College. And whereas his dedication, inquiring mind, collegiate work style, and diligent service was of tremendous value to the college, board, and student body through improved student success and physical stability. And now therefore be it resolved that the entire college community extends its appreciation to Pablo Leon and wishes him much success in his journey. Can I get a vote, please? Move by trustee Baldini, second by trustee Rios. Trustee Baker?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Is trustee Goff still late?
I am here, I just arrived, it's an aye for me.
Good, so how do you vote on this resolution for Pablo?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
And trustee Baldini?
Aye.
And that's an aye for me as well. He will be missed. And it was a pleasure having him on the board. We're going to overview of mental health services for students. We have some presentations. And Mr. Daddo will introduce the mental health services team who work with NBC students.
Thank you very much, yes, at the last board meeting, the board had asked for a presentation on the health services that we offer, our mental health services we offer our students at the college. And so we put together, we arranged for the three.
I'm sorry, Oscar, I could barely hear you.
Last, I was saying, last board meeting, the board had requested a presentation of the mental health services offered at Napa Valley College. And so what we've done is that we've arranged for the three mental health professionals to share a bit of themselves and their area of expertise. And so we have with us three individuals, Glennis Banks, LCSW, who actually is, works for the Veterans Health Care in San Francisco, the VA office. We have Paula Torre Ray, who's a mentis, mental health specialist. And then our very own Magdalena Orr, who's our MFT. So I've asked that the order, as I just mentioned them, would be the order that they would present. So Glennis, please.
Sorry, I was having a little difficulty with my mute button there. Good evening, everybody, I just wanna thank you for allowing me this opportunity to introduce myself and let you know what we're doing at the San Francisco VA. So like Oscar said, I am a social worker, LCSW with the San Francisco VA. I started with them in November of last year, and so I transitioned to working onsite one day a week at your campus in January. Just a little bit of background about me, I've been in social work since two thousand and six. I did obtain my master's at Temple University. I have experience in child welfare, hospice, inpatient psych, working with seriously mentally ill patients as well as veterans, also trauma, just a host of different things since two thousand and six. I'm also certified in cognitive processing therapy, I've been certified since two thousand and eighteen. I've been employed with the VA since two thousand and fifteen, so I have a lot of experience working with veterans and dealing with a multitude of different issues that may arise. Some of the services that we provide through my program, which is the Student Veteran Health Program, we work with a wide variety of different schools to include Napa Valley College as well as San Francisco State, Community College of San Francisco, and a host of others. But basically what we provide is general mental health or specialty mental health, whether that is trauma treatment, readjustment. We oftentimes will also refer to other programs for things like drug and alcohol treatment, psychiatric care, inpatient care. We also provide general social work, so that can be everything from housing issues, financial. Given COVID, there's a lot of things going on, so we're offering a lot of support with that. I do general outreach to Napa County as on the side, also as the community veteran health social worker also. VA enrollment, VA healthcare education is also what we provide, some briefcase management as well. And at the school, we're also providing speaker series, so we bring local community members or organizations or VA healthcare-related departments to the students to provide a one-hour kind of like a workshop for them, so that's everything from the benefits to career planning, workshops around time management, stress management, mindfulness, a wide variety of different things. So I am working on a list for the fall, so I will have dates hopefully by next week to be able to provide to our Veteran Resource Center over there at NBC. I think you wanted one story about students that we have helped, so as I just started in January, I did have a brief interaction with someone who was already receiving some level of support from our program. So she was a female veteran, age thirty-six, multiple health issues, not married but engaged at the time, and one child, so she started with receiving some level of support from us, our program in two thousand and eighteen. And so during the spring semester, there was a lot of changes with COVID, so we provided her with support onsite. But as we transitioned to remote care and your services at the school also transferred to remote care, we continued to provide her with services and was able to help her through that stressful time. Because as everything went remote, her son had to be homeschooled, she was home more, her spouse was home more. And she was preparing for graduation from Napa Valley College. So she was preparing for graduation, she also had a wedding planned also for the spring, the end of the spring term, as well as moving from one home to, well, an apartment to an actual home that they had purchased. So we were helping her through that stressful time of adjustment. And so it is a success, she successfully graduated this semester. And she did get married, obviously it was a small wedding. Her son is excelling at school, even though they're doing it at home and had to adjust to that. And they were able to purchase their home with the help of the home loan, so those are just a little bit about what we do and how we can support students, not just with mental health, but just with adjustment to things like COVID or other things that may occur. I'm not sure if there's anything else that you would like to know, but I am open to questions and answering any.
I have a question, this is trustee Baldini. Yes, number one, Ms. Banks, thank you very much for answering the phone this afternoon, it works. Looking at the Student Veteran Health Program brochure, the county, the San Francisco VA based in Napa, there's no contact information, would that also be your phone number, or is there something missing there?
It would be my phone number, it also has the office that I have at Napa County Health and Human Services on their south campus based in Napa. So it should be on there as well on the brochure, it's pretty small, but it is listed on there, my hours and the location of that particular office space.
It's on page two, Michael.
Yes, I see that, no, the county is what I was referring to, it has corporate, twenty-seven fifty-one Napa Valley Corporate Drive, and there's no phone number up there.
No, I apologize, I see it now, yes, it would be the same number. That's my number, I'm the one that answered it, so yeah, it would be the same number.
Very good. Thank you very much.
No problem. And I just wanna plug that we are doing a virtual, well, we're doing it at all of our colleges and universities, but we are doing a joint collab with Santa Rosa Junior College, we're doing a virtual enrollment event, which is for August the twenty-fifth from ten thirty to two thirty. This allows student veterans, as well as if this gets out to community veterans, to attend a virtual event where they can be enrolled in VA healthcare or if they have any questions about healthcare. What we're trying to do is provide individual attention, so they would come into the Zoom meeting and they'll go to a waiting room and then they'll be assigned a staff person that can help them directly. So whether that's questions about VA healthcare, whether it's help with appointments, making appointments, learning about eligibility, it just, it doesn't matter what they need, they can come into that meeting and they will be assigned a person one-on-one, and so they'll go into like a chat room to address any of their VA-related or social work-related needs at that time.
Well, thank you very much, Glennis, we really appreciate your time you take this evening, and now I'd like to ask for Paola, please.
Good afternoon, everyone, it's hard act to follow. And so I'd like to say thank you and thank you for allowing me to come into this space. My name is Paola La Borre, I'm a licensed clinical social worker. And I'm excited to kind of let you all know what I've been doing at the college for the last three academic years. But before I start, I wanted to kind of share with all of you some exciting news. After having several discussions with some of the mentis leadership and making some recommendations around bringing a male therapist on campus, I'm actually very delighted to announce that starting Monday, September fourteenth, my colleague Matt Van Och will be starting at the college, so I'm actually very happy that that, you know, that that's gonna happen. He wanted to join today, but unfortunately his schedule didn't allow it, so he sent me a little bit of, I'm gonna bring it up now, just a statement you may or may not have spread it already, so these are Matt's words. It says, "I'm very excited about working at the college. My practicum and graduate school field placement was at a community college and I enjoyed the experience a lot. I was born and raised in Vallejo, I went to Solano Community College, but I have many friends and family members who have attended NBC. So I'm excited about working there. I have my BA in Psychology from Sonoma State and my BA in Counseling Psychology from John F. Kennedy University." Like I said, I'm actually very excited that, you know, my recommendation is coming through for a male therapist. This is just, I'm hoping that this will help bring those students who are hesitant about mental health services. So again, once again, I'm very excited. So now just a little bit of background about myself. So I grew up in Napa, I went to public school there, you know, I immigrated into this country. I also attended, I'm also a Napa Valley College alumnus, so that's very exciting. I went through the EOPS and the Trio SSS program. I actually was, little fun fact, the first student cohort that launched Trio SSS, that's kind of exciting. I got my bachelor's in early childhood education from Pacific Union College. I went to UCLA and got my master's in social welfare and graduated in two thousand and twelve. I've worked with many different populations, from school-aged children, mentis has given me a wide range of experience as well. Undocumented immigrants, families, high-risk youth, I'm also a domestic violence-trained therapist as well as a sexual assault therapy therapist. And for some of you who may not know the work that mentis and the college are doing together, I'm actually the therapist for five specific programs for EOPS, Trio SSS, Fuente, Umoja, and Mesa and STEM. And the understanding is that we're really trying to reach those first-generation immigrant students, our undocumented students, minority students, and the nice piece is that I get to provide bicultural bilingual services to them. But we don't turn any students away, that's the most important thing, that we don't turn any students away. And lastly, I know that, just like Glennis, we were asked to share a story of of a student that we worked with in the last year, so I'm gonna try to maintain as much confidentiality, so I'm gonna speak in very broad terms. This was a student I started with at the end of the fall semester in two thousand and nineteen. She's one of my minority students, and she was referred to me by her EOPS counselor. And there was a range of mental health issues related to anxiety and depression and some family concerns. But ultimately, what was kind of emerging was that this was actually impacting her academically. The student was progressing really well, was getting close to ending with her around February, March. And then, like anything, COVID hit, shelter in place, and unfortunately my student started to really decompensate. So during this time, I saw a lot of high-risk behaviors emerge. With the cap, the nice piece, the collaboration that mentis and Napa Valley College has was that my clinical decision was really to, I have to see this student in person. So I reached out to both my mentis supervisors and as well as Oscar and the Mesa staff, because that's where my office is. And once they heard a little bit of what was going on and we decided to take the proper, obviously, precautions, it was interesting doing therapy with a mask on and, but we maintained a six feet of distance. The nice part was that I was actually very grateful that the college was able to allow that. The student, I was able to get the student back on track, they were able to regulate. And once, it kind of took us into the summer, but once the student really was able to stabilize, I connected her to more long-term therapy, proper medication, and so it was a lot of hard work, I was very appreciative to Oscar and the NBC staff that worked with me and as well as my supervisors. But that was a great success story, student continues to be in the college, which I know sometimes what can tend to happen is if these students fall through the crack, they just leave the college, so it was a lot of work, but I am very appreciative of the work and the cooperation between mentis and the college. And that's all I have, I don't know if anybody has any questions for me. Thank you.
Paola, I just wanna thank you for all your work, both on mentis and with the college. And I know that there's a lot of students that have greatly gotten quite a bit for their lives out of it, so I'm glad that we're able to provide that service, so thank you.
Yes, same here, thank you for all you do for people in general, people in general, but our students specifically. Thank you for all you do.
Chair, if I could ask a question, Paola, thank you very much, it's really this, you know, in terms of this pandemic and COVID and having to deal with social distancing guidelines, how has that impacted your work? I know Magdalena was planning to talk about that as well, I appreciate to hear her thoughts, but just to hear your insights and being able to connect whether remotely, I'm so pleased to hear that you were able to, you know, get the permission that you needed to, you know, have that one-on-one connection in person, but just wanted to get your thoughts in terms of how that's impacting your ability to serve your clients.
So we were able to shift pretty quickly into doing remote telehealth because it was such an extraordinary time, a lot of our our supervising boards allowed to use platforms like Zoom or Skype in the meantime. So I was actually able to transition all the students I was seeing at the college and continue to work with them. The struggle was exactly what I explained, it was, you know, here was a student that was seeing me weekly, was doing really well, was progressing, had structure, and then had mental health issues coming up, but then when this happened and the shelter in place, it was a huge impact on the student, not just that student, but she actually illustrates a lot of what a lot of us went through, a lot of our students and having to really shift very quickly. It was an adjustment for sure, but I was actually very thankful that I was able to use these platforms and not abandon any of our students. They all, all the students I had continued with me, ended with me, I actually started one. There was one student I started and ended telehealth. So it was an adjustment, but again, with, I'm very glad that I had this, because then the worst case scenario would have been to completely drop off and not have the service available to the student.
Very nice to hear that you hadn't had any drop-off at all with your people that were existing, your existing clients, it's really nice to hear.
Yes, definitely.
Hi, Paola, thank you very much for your time as well, we really appreciate your information, thank you. And now as Magdalena, please.
Hello, everybody, how you doing? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Not the best with technology, so I'm a little bit nervous. My name is Magdalena Orr, and I was born and raised in Poland, I immigrated here with my family thirty-six years ago. My educational journey definitely started here in the United States, and I'm deeply grateful. I finished Chico State University and obtained my master's degree in marriage and family therapy. This work is, my heart is in this work. It is a work which allows me to with heart and passion, help human beings, as well as there is a gift, bidirectional gift, where I find myself growing and expanding also as a human being, that's the wonderful gift of the relationship that I really deeply appreciate with all my clients. So this clientele is at our college is so deeply inspirational to me, and I am very grateful to be able to be part of the Napa Valley community. I have seventeen years' experience working with people in the last nine years here at Napa Valley College, with many memorable transformative moments, for me personally as well as a student. What makes my work so unique is that I am working at the Student Health Center with the opportunity to collaborate with Nancy Temerick, who is a wonderful nurse practitioner. And together, we are able to create a service that responds immediately to students' needs. I think this is the quality that our students appreciate so deeply, that we can provide services in a very prompt way. A lot of students come with pre-existing conditions and sometimes are bumped out of their insurance and are not able to renew their medication. And so being able to come to one building where they can receive a supportive counseling, as well as have their medical issues cured, it's really unique and I think it's it's a class, I think that, you know, a lot of my students give a lot of positive feedback about the accessibility. During my work with students, I utilize various modalities, so it's not like one size fits all, we have We have students coming from different cultural backgrounds, from different emotional and intellectual needs. Therefore, I move with my educational background to meet the clients where they are at and what they need. Not every student needs to reflect on their path and their childhood and be psychoanalyzed. A lot of the help comes from a very practical approach, providing them resources and referrals where they can have immediate help in lifting some of the suffering that they are going through. I would like to share with you our recent stories. And I'm working with a young man who is twenty-three years old. He is a young Latino man with LGBTQ, from LGBTQ community. And I never met him. This is a new client that reached out to me. Our conversations and our relationship is strictly in the realm of telephone calls and text messaging. And so I am really surprised that this way of communicating in this pandemic circumstances is enough in many cases. People are longing for connection, and even a text or short conversation can create tremendous change in a person's, you know, mood and how they feel. I was skeptical about the telemedicine and resisted to some degree. But I, through this process, I definitely feel that there is important a place to move with the changing times. Our students right now, the new generation operates in these modalities, you know, phone calls and Zooms and texting. It's, you know, that's how they are able to communicate with their friends. And so I think that moving with the time and adjusting is very important. Is there anything else I could share with you?
Do we have any questions from Magdalena?
Just again, I just, all of you guys, in the work that you're doing for mental health, especially during these times, it's not easy, and I think, obviously, our society is looking at mental health differently. And what you guys do is very important. So thanks again for all the great work in improving people's lives through mental health.
So thank you once again, Magdalena, Paula, and Glennis. We really appreciate your time today, and we definitely, we really appreciate the expert service that you provide our students. Thank you.
Yes, and I really liked the diversity. It was, it was great. It's good. Thank you. Thank you all. So now we go to number six on the agenda, and that is the report. Dr. Tejada.
Good evening, everybody. I have a report from the summer for you. I am adopting the mantra that Arundhati Roy, through her observation of the effect of the pandemic on us, has described, and that is using the pandemic as a portal for constructive change and maybe even more efficient ways of doing the work that we do. So this summer, the Academic Senate leadership was very busy. We launched the Instructional Design Institute. We completed two sessions on distance education pedagogy workshops. Sixty-seven faculty participated. And what the quantitative data suggests is that folks were extremely satisfied with the pedagogy of the institute, as well as how they would use that pedagogy in their classes. Many of them said for years to come, they felt that the institute supported the moving into the online teaching venue in an effective way, so that they could better serve their students. What we also learned was that one of the obstacles to effective online teaching is treating it as though it is a face-to-face class. And so for some time, many of us and the faculty have noticed how our job description has changed over the years. Effective online teaching demands that we have time, not just to learn the technology and to keep abreast of the ever-changing technology, but also to keep current with the pedagogy that aligns with that technology. So, and effective course design. And what we discovered was that both the trainers and the participants were reporting more than a hundred hours to develop an online course in a mindful, effective manner. So with some of these, some of these truths that were revealed through the data, we are going to start asking questions and reflect on what does it mean to do to the infrastructure of Napa Valley College as we are now teaching a large swath of our curricula in the online modality? What assumptions are we making and what changes do we have to make in faculty job descriptions to address the effective teaching in the online venue? The other is, what will that fiscal impact be? Such as, is it realistic to have or to keep the current caps that we have on some of our classes in different disciplines? Or do we have to reexamine that? So those were some of the things that the institute, the data collection of the initial two sessions of the institute reveals. We will be launching Phase Three of the Instructional Design Institute this fall. The first round will be a third session of distance education pedagogy workshop. And then the second will be a workshop on culturally responsive pedagogy. So we will provide training on that. Both of the sessions will be extended by one week, so there will be two four-week sessions. So that's on the instructional design front. In addition to that, I led an Academic Senate Policy Revision Task Force. And let me see, I don't see Catherine Kittles' picture on my... But Catherine, we're dedicating this to you. We were able to work collaboratively with the Office of the President to agree on ten, on having ten policies and administrative procedures revised and completed for initial review of this, for the Senate on August 31st. We are on schedule, and we even superseded that goal. We will have fourteen policies and administrative procedures revised and ready for initial approval of the Senate by August 31st. The Policy Review Task Force, I had put out a call, and it was comprised, or continues to be, made up of Andrea Bewitt, Seth Anderson, Eric Scherer, Jim McGowan, and myself as chair. So one of the things that we did learn, again, collecting data as we went along, is that we saw that the work of the task force reveals that it is nuanced work. It is work that demands research and reflection, discussion, and collaboration with the appropriate college entities who are affected by or have, or we need input from in terms of the particular policies. And so I did enter into conversation with Dr. Kraft, and I'm waiting for his recommendation as to perhaps whether we keep the task, we continue with the task force and through the semester, and perhaps adopt a more permanent arrangement to keep the task force working. But again, from June to August, we were able to do, to revise fourteen board policies and administrative procedures that had been previously stuck in committee. So that, the other is, of course, at the state Academic Senate level, we continue to look at ways of implementing equity-minded practices, including hiring practices. And I just, this afternoon, received an invitation to a webinar that is specifically geared towards hiring more diverse faculty. And so I will bring an update on that. And that concludes my report. Thank you so very much for your support and for the ability to collaborate with the Office of the President. Oh, one more thing, and I truly enjoy working with Sarah, our new Vice President of Academic Affairs. Thank you so much. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Tejada, and thank you for your resilience and the hard work that you've done, especially during this two or three months, and all that you've done and presented, and being on top of, you know, the changes that inevitably are coming due to COVID. Thank you very much. Six point two, Administrative Confidential Senate Report. Mr. Harris posted his report online. You should be, should have been able to see it. Six point three, Associated Students of Napa Valley College Report. Celeste Romero Medina, the Acting President, welcome. And do you have a report for us?
I don't have a present.
Is she here?
No, she is not here.
Okay. Okay, so six point four, Classified Association. Valerie also posted, sent us a report and posted it. So six point five, Senate Report. Mr. Shoemaker. Marty?
Don't believe he's on.
Okay, he left us. And six point six, Faculty Association Report. Kristy Agonado.
Hi, I'm here.
Kristy, how are you?
Hi, and sorry to miss last month, this craziness. I do have a report. I have been busy-ish over the summer. I am. I actually attended the National Educational Association's Giant Representative Assembly, which I do every year. But instead of going to Atlanta for a week, like we were supposed to, that we were set to do, we ended up having it virtually. So we actually had our representative assembly every day for six hours for a week on Zoom, which is not all cracked up to be, but we got some work done, so that was good. I also attended the CTA President's Conference, and that was really helpful. CTA, in light of the, of the current pandemic, has actually decided to move all of their events to a virtual format until summer of 2021. So they're, they're just making, you know, no point in making plans to end up having to cancel them. So they've, they've gone ahead and said permission to go virtual until summer 2021. I also attended the Distance Ed Academy that the Academic Senate put on, that Eileen was talking about, and it was life-changing. And not being, you know, not being a hyperbolic either, it completely changed the way that I teach online. I think as someone who came over from the old blackboard format and was sort of one of the first pilot people to teach on Canvas, I took that blackboard mentality and kind of shoved it into Canvas for a long time, and it was fine. But just being able to see all the new techniques and the eye-opening ways to use media and to use outside resources really kind of flipped my philosophy for how I was teaching on my head, and I thought that was great. So I'm really excited, this is my first semester, being able to implement those new ideas. So I just wanted to thank Dr. Tejada for having this idea and really bringing it to fruition. And it couldn't come at a better time. Other than that, I do not have a whole lot to report. We have not met yet. We're going to be meeting very soon, and I look forward to Zooming negotiations. But I really got no negotiations news for you today. So glad to see everybody and glad to be back.
Glad to have you back. And I think you had enough of a report. You had more than enough on the report, and thank you for that wonderful report. So six point seven, President and His Cabinet Reports.
Thank you very much. Welcome back, everybody. It's, here we are, August. You know, moving into the new year, so I'm excited about that. Welcome back, faculty. And there are, there are so many more people on campus. Even though there's few people on campus, it's exciting just to see just a little bit of activity going on. I'm going to boot it and a little bit to the Cabinet Reports, and then finish up with a quick report on the Upper Valley Campus, just to keep it there, and talk about student equity and inclusivity. So let me, let me ask Sarah to talk about Academic Affairs, please, and then we'll move to Oscar, Bob, and Charles. Your answer.
Great. Good evening, Board of Trustees. So nice to see you again. I'm trying to wrap my mind around tomorrow being the first day of school. And usually one of my favorite days of the year, and so I'm going to wake up and do something special tomorrow morning. I'm going to share a little bit about fall schedule, the current status, enrollment snapshot, and how we've prepared. The week after the July board meeting, based on state and local guidance, we made the decision to shift fall schedule to mostly online. And although as an institution, we made the shift to distance education last March across the board, and we ran a very successful summer session online. This fall, I feel like we're really asking faculty, classified, and administrators to provide education and educational support services online on a scale that we haven't done before. And we have a mindset that this is an opportunity for all of us to strive for excellence in this new modality. But we are really up and ready for the challenge. Based on analysis that had been completed before I got here under Bay Smiley's leadership, there had already been a Plan B put in place. And based on criteria from the state that we could rely on, we were ready to convert classes very quickly. Deans, Program Coordinators, the Office of Academic Affairs were able to make changes in the schedule in just a few days. And within a week of making the decision to switch about 200 sections from in-person to online, the Office of Institutional Advancement had communicated those changes super effectively out to all students in a variety of ways. And so the result is a fall schedule that is ninety percent online and ten percent in-person. And of those sections that are online, we have about fifty percent of them have some level of synchronous instruction with contact with their instructor. And then we have our in-person classes, about sixty sections. And each of the areas that has those in-person classes, eleven areas, have thought about spacing, equipment use, PPE needs, and written out their protocols, which have been evaluated against county guidance and are being reviewed again against the most recent state institution of, institutions of higher education guidance. It's really hard to know how to evaluate the enrollment patterns that we're seeing, because we're not really sure. because we're not really sure the degree to which historical trends hold true right now. As you can imagine, some areas are more heavily impacted than others. So enrollment's down slightly, but my best guess is that it will end up very close to last year. We're seeing an increase in the percent of full-time students, and we'll be offering some additional late start sections to accommodate students who might join us later in the semester. I think what I want to do, the most important thing I want to do in my report is to recognize how much effort has gone into being prepared for fall. The faculty have committed to using technology in innovative and engaging ways. You heard about this commitment from Dr. Tahada's report and in the number of faculty who went through the IDI. And then again, when Kristi just talked about reimagining her online classes. I attended the Career Education Division meeting today, and the faculty shared what they have been learning and incorporating. They shared appreciation for Kathy Gillis, the DE Coordinator, the DE Tech Support Team. And they also talked a lot about how colleagues have really stepped up to help each other and facilitate these informal learning networks. Overall, the Flex Day agenda over the last two days was packed, full of inspiring sessions that spoke to pedagogy, to student needs, to self-reflection, and to self-care. And I think that they also captured the spirit of the moment in the sense of everybody wanting to be something that I've heard Dr. Kraft say a couple of times since I got here to Napa Valley College, which is we are all in for students. And that's something that I saw and felt a lot over the last couple of days. So I feel very hopeful about the semester ahead. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Sarah. And welcome. You know, I think you can see and feel that Sarah has, you know, not only smoothly entered Napa Valley College, but is meeting. And that's a difficult task in any transition. So thank you so much. Oscar, do you have a follow-up report? Anything tonight? You're muted still.
Sorry about that. Just very briefly, I just wanted to assure our trustees that the services that Senate Affairs is responsible for are all working. They're all being provided primarily remotely. What we have done is that many of you may recall or have seen at the corner of the campus here outside the bookstore area by the firepoles, actually. We have a space that many years ago we used as the information booth. And actually, we had an operator there back in the seventies and the eighties. So that space has now been repurposed for a real or another information booth. So we have someone there from nine o'clock to two in the afternoon. Of course, there's protection of the windows such for those students who need attention in person. And this is Monday through Thursday. And then we also have the Welcome Center that's equipped with phones and the like to provide the same services remotely, similar to what we have for counseling and other services. We also have staff who are answering phones as well as emails with inquiries from students as to how to get you registered and the web, their all the web information and those sort of things. The other service that we're also providing is a food basket. And that's now what we're doing is that students make their order or make a request online, and then it's packaged for them. And then we have racks outside the food basket. And so there's contact-free distribution of foods. They come by, they pick up their two or three bags of food with a name on it, and then they're offered money. So just to short, all things are looking pretty good. We had a very successful first-ever new student convocation on Tuesday. And this was created by Robin D'Arcangelo, our Senior Dean of Senate Affairs. We had over 380 students that were online at the same time for three hours. And at the end of the session, they each received a What Her Daughter gift certificate to the bookstore, courtesy of donations from several areas of the campus as well as the foundation. So all in all, things are looking pretty good. We're looking forward to a brand-new year, and students appear to be very happy. Thank you.
Good. Thanks, Oscar. It's a great start. I mean, you know, what you're hearing is that we're flexible and we're really addressing student needs. You know, Bob often talks about, Parker often talks about finance, but the administrative service is part of his job for facilities, and IT are also critical, and you might touch on that a little bit, Bob, tonight.
Sure. So we have been very busy in administrative services. I'll first talk about IT. IT is preparing equipment for loan to faculty members. I also just saw an email within the past hour that the 50 wireless hotspots that we ordered have arrived. And so they're being prepared for distribution to students, faculty, or staff who need that level of support. In the facilities area, if you have an opportunity to walk around campus, you may see signs on classrooms that indicate that that classroom has been cleaned and disinfected. And if you are entering that classroom to let the facility staff know, these are classrooms that we will not be using for the fall semester or don't expect to use for the fall semester. And the facility staff will also be working on ongoing cleaning and disinfecting for the classrooms that we will be using during the fall semester. They also checked in all of the personal protection equipment that we received from the California Office of Emergency Services. All community colleges receive them. And so we will be using them to distribute to students, faculty, and staff who need them. And then finally, in the business office, we have folks working in the business office every day. They're on rotating schedules so that the accounts payable and payroll functions continue during the pandemic. And then finally, as Dr. Kraft indicated, the big news in business is that there will be a state budget workshop tomorrow, and we expect to get additional information about the outlook for the state budget from that workshop.
Thank you, Bob. Any more on that? You didn't? Okay, thank you. And Associate Vice President, Charles Algron.
Well, first of all, I'd like to say welcome back to all faculty, even though I know many of you were heavily engaged over the summertime. And but hopefully, everyone had an opportunity to take a well-deserved break and welcome back. Over the summertime and working with my training manager, Christina Rivera, we were able to provide trainings for classified and our administrative confidential staff. Between June and the end of July, we held 13 different sessions covering a wide spectrum of topics from getting the best of stress to cybersecurity to demystifying the evaluation process and how to create a personal professional development plan. In the fall, in the, over the fall semester, we're going to be working on a supervisory development lab. And this is geared to those who are new to management or those that are interested in pursuing their next career goals in a leadership role for the campus. Additionally, over the summertime, we worked with IABC, which stands for the Institute for Evidence-Based Change, and working with Dr. Brett Phillips, who is the president of this organization, to bring caring campus to Napa Valley College. With this does for us, it increases our classified knowledge on how to support our students. Using the word of IABC, it increases the student's sense of connectedness and belonging. And so it's all about the students, and we want to make sure that in every aspect, in every corner of our campus, that we are providing that education and providing that direction so that when students come to our campus, no matter where they're at, whether they're interacting with our custodial staff or interacting with our IT staff or in Student Affairs in the classroom, they're getting a really good reception and feeling that connectedness and a sense of belonging. And in addition to that, we are still managing our flexible work arrangements, agreements, allowing administrators, confidentialists, and classified staff flexible options to addressing both their work needs as well as the personal needs during this time of the pandemic. And that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Board, you know, listening to all this, you know, it's hard, and we've talked, it's a little bit like drinking from a fire hose, all these things. So feel free to reach back out to the Cabinet members to ask for, you know, the more detailed reports or whatever you want. Not to generate reports. No, I don't mean that. I mean to for more information. So let me share a screen a little bit for a couple of things. And I will host. Disabled, your share screen. Okay. Can you enable me, Catherine, to share screen?
Yes, you should be able to.
Okay, let me see if I can find that. And it looks like that, right? You see both sides of this?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, we did. Let me talk a little bit about Upper Valley Campus. Through your recommendation of last month and the month before is really going to be a recurring item for us, just to touch base. Some weeks, some months, we won't have a lot, but some months we will. I'm not going to go through this on PowerPoint, but just really quickly touch on a couple of things. We did have the community forum regarding the Upper Valley Campus, August 5th. And I think many of you attended or knew about it a little bit. There's a recording of it. It's also available if you'd like to get that. And we had about 100 folks or so in attendance between participants and presenters. I think the issue is really about trying to get a grip, you know, in Santa Helena, trying to get a grip of the community's feeling about it. It is a center and not a campus. You know, we call it a campus, and that's more of just a name convenience that we decided. But there is a technical difference there. And I did correct a couple of the dates that I had wrong in the original slide. It was brought to fruition in 92, and it really opened in 94, where it said 1980 up here, so we offered classes and all of that. Is that correct now? Am I getting the right information? I believe so. I'm getting a thumbs up, so I believe so. We talked about the current configuration, how we were using the site in terms of art, music, culinary entrance, and flex meeting rooms, and the event spaces. We talked about, you know, these current education and trainings. These are the things that I presented to you along with other Cabinet members a few months ago. And we talked about, you know, what we consider to be a kind of a full swing, exciting future. And then COVID hit, of course. And so the only thing that we have, we had all these current partnerships in play. Music in the Vineyards and the Writers Conference and Festival of Napa Valley, all of them. And we're really excited about moving forward, but the only thing that really happened over the late spring and summer was the Santa Helena Farmers Market. I thought it was a really nice idea when the city manager called me and we connected, and then Bob's team, you know, kind of took it from there. And I've heard more about Santa Helena Farmers Market from local residents. They hadn't been there. So they could drive there and actually see it. And it was really, you know, a brilliant move to be able to allow this use of it. We had, I shared values and principles with this group because we really wanted to make sure that we were front and center about leadership and sustainability. Economic efficiency was front and center, and then integrity, collegiality, innovation. And then Bob went over the current budget facts. It is not particularly an inexpensive place to run. And, you know, with salaries and benefits being about half, you know, of this 660 and the other, you know, remaining several hundred thousand dollars to kind of keep it open and keep it running. And then Holly, thank you. She ran a survey out to a large group of folks. How would you describe, this is, you know, a light bulb that is describing what people saw. And you can see, I mean, you know, center is learning and growth, curiosity, accessibility. The whole key, I think, in this thing, let me see if I can get to not share. There we go. I think the whole key in it really is to be accessible and transparent to the community. They really want something to happen up there. We also had deeper discussions during the forum, and we addressed, I think, in the first way, that the city had interest, continuing interest, and exploring it. We had questions from that community about how we might collaborate. So that was also, I felt, you know, a little bit of a breakthrough. Let me switch a little bit to the other topic that we're going to continue to have front and center on our agenda under the President's report. And that's this, it says student equity and inclusivity, and we may just change it to equity and inclusivity. Although the main key here is I want to be able to share with you, with staff, not just me each time, but how we're working on inclusivity and equity across the institution. It's certainly been front and center. It is now. Many of you participated today, certainly Rosada led today in the building a cultural responsive campus, culturally responsive campus, along with Cabinet. I think it went really well. I'm interested in hearing and seeing the feedback. And several faculty contacted me today. They appreciated that we're talking directly about how to be responsive, more responsive to all students. What are we doing for all students? And then obviously, I think because of the George Floyd incident over the summer and the heightened, you know, Black Lives Matter, we really landed on faculty and staff concerns. So we've been addressing that. I instituted a couple of months ago a series of four president-oriented open dialogues. And I have to say they've been candid, refreshing, open, sometimes tough to hear. We're learning, and I think I would typify for you and for the audience. I think we're doing a good job, but we certainly can be doing a better job. So we're addressing it, taking it very seriously. And we have a fine staff, fine faculty and administrators who are very, very oriented about creating a place where students really feel safe. They feel recognized. They feel like they can transform their lives in a successful way. And for me, as President, I'm keeping us focused on that. I shared in several venues that we can't control the world situation or even the United States or California, or, you know, maybe, maybe, maybe we can make a big difference in our county. I think we can. And I know we can make a big difference in thousands of students' lives. So that's where we're putting our energy. And I think we can create a staff pathway that addresses this kind of reality, the new reality. So it went well. I'm happy to continue that discussion and dialogue. We are just now beginning for this entire year to talk about our action plans and coordination with the Chancellor's Action Plan, Call to Action, and what we're going to do as next steps. So stand by. You should have a lot of feedback on that. With that, Rosada, I am concluded.
Ron, may I ask a question or make a comment, I guess? I wanted to just follow up on the Upper Valley Campus report, or Center, whatever we're calling it. I was really happy being able to attend that to hear that we reiterated and really kind of solidified that, given the direction that we're going in with programs and academics, the culinary community things, that if we were to move into a lease of a portion of that campus with the City of Santa Helena, that it would not negatively impact our ability to do those programs and that those are compatible. I kind of get the feeling, you know, they contacted us. Everything's kind of went poof. And then we directed staff a couple of months ago to be open to a conversation, at which point it's like, well, okay, if they don't call, we don't have an opportunity to be open. So I'm wondering if at this point it might be So I'm wondering if at this point it might be good, a good idea to actually for us to contact them and if that hasn't already happened and see about getting that conversation going again and seeing if that is something that they're still interested in. I'm hearing that they are, but I'm not certain where, who has the ball at this point. And um also, I just wanted to say that if if we do move into something where it starts to get, where we're actually talking about possible terms, that I'd like to suggest that we work with a broker to negotiate those terms, um, working with the board, working with the the um college leadership just so we make certain that all of the details that we are not experts in get taken care of.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, you know, first, that we, the, you hit it right on the mark. Um, what we can do and what we plan to do academically in training and in our programs, um, will take a portion of of the Upper Valley Campus. And this, and those dialogues with the city are certainly open and could be ongoing. So I'm very excited about that. That's why it's on the agenda and we'll be coming back to you again with more specific.
Dr. Kev, would you anticipate hiring any professionals in terms of negotiating, you know, if it gets down to that road in terms of terms and and who would be the team? And and how do you anticipate, I guess you anticipate communicating with the board on that at our meetings or in, I don't know, a closed session, but just want to see, do you think in terms of your internal team, uh, you know, leading that outside of yourself, who would that be?
Um, Cabinet, it's a good question. Thank you, Jeff. Um, Cabinet is the recommending and decision-making body for for this. So those generally those would certainly, certainly we'd have conversations in in terms of how it would affect faculty and staff, and we we want input in the community. But in the final analysis, we would definitely hire outside either legal counsel or a consultant in a way to, you know, to to address any of the of the final negotiations. We can only do final negotiations and negotiations, purchase or a lease kind of a thing in closed session with regard to any um real property. Um, so we could do that absolutely in closed session. But a lot of the discussion, um, I'll be bringing to you in open session for transparency's sake.
Great. Well, I I do, I do like the idea of hiring a professional for just a little feedback on that.
Thank you. And I understand that's the way that I'm sure that we'll go.
Yes, thank you. Are there any more questions on um on that particular item? Okay, then. Thank you. Um, we go to number seven, consent calendar. Uh, do we have any questions? Can I entertain a motion to approve or?
First of all, I'll second trustee Dodd.
Okay, so moved by trustee Baldini and second by trustee Dodd.
Wait, wait, wait. I wanted to, I wanted to pull the minutes on eight six.
Would that be enough? Okay, Catherine.
I'll I'll second that, that amended motion.
So moved by trustee Baldini with um uh and second by trustee Dodd with a amended motion. Can Catherine, can you please repeat the the amendment, if you will?
Uh, yes, so it's a motion to approve the consent calendar by trustee, oh, removing or pulling the minutes of the special meeting on August sixth. And the motion is by Baldini and seconded by Dodd.
Thank you for that. Um, trustee Baker?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Goff? Did she leave us? Unless she's muted?
Yeah, sorry. I I I didn't hit the right button to unmute me.
Okay, so is that an aye for you?
That is an aye for me, yeah.
trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Yes.
And trustee Baldini?
Aye.
And that is an aye for me as well. And so that becomes... I need help here.
Uh, we'll tackle these separately. So do you want them open, trustee Baldini?
Yes, that's correct. Please. And under the under item, item four, four point two. Uh, I certainly appreciate the efforts by trustee Rios. I believe it was a collaborative by the entire board. And I just wanted the minutes to reflect the uh the work that uh uh you, Madam Chair, as well as Jennifer and the rest of the board. That it was a collaborative effort.
It it certainly was, but this is referring to the one section that I took out specifically and revised and then sent back to the committee.
Yes, understood on that. That we'll see later in the meeting. So move, move approval?
Second.
Moved approval by trustee Baldini, second by trustee Rios. Trustee Baker?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Goff? Trustee Goff?
Hi, I'm here. I'm here. Hi. I don't know what's happening. Sorry.
Trustee Iverson?
It's a aye for me.
It's gonna be a stroke.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
Trustee Baldini?
Aye.
And that's an aye for me as well. Um, so I'm sorry, I'm, so we go to uh, item eight, yes, eight point one.
Correct.
And that is academics and fair information discussion item. Uh, Dr. S. Parker, do you have anything else to um tell us about this particular item? Or do we have any questions for Dr. S. Parker?
None.
Okay, so moved by trustee Baker. Can I get a second?
Second trustee Iverson.
This is an information item.
Oh.
Oh. Never mind.
Okay, she withdraws for approval. Number nine, administrative services information, uh, discussion and action items. Uh, nine point one, resolution and contract uh with BE Development Incorporated. Does anybody have any questions?
Do we have a presentation or anything like that for?
We we certainly can. We have a PowerPoint to walk through this process. I also want to point out that this is actually a two-step agenda item. It would require adopting a resolution to allow us to um exercise our uh our rights under government code four two one seven point one two to enter into the agreement. And then it would be your approval to enter into the agreement itself. So there are actually two actions that take place uh on this particular item. Catherine, please open the executive summary document. And so this this agreement will be with BE Development. BE Development is a part of Bloom Energy. Um, you may have heard of Bloom Energy that were in the news uh fairly recently. They use their factory to recondition ventilators. Um, they're located over in San Jose. But this actual item here is to enter into a um power purchase agreement with Bloom Energy um to uh uh provide substitute electric power that will uh uh meet our needs during peak periods and will also significantly reduce our cost of energy. And Catherine, if you can move, am I able to move this or do you have to move it?
I'm afraid that's me, Bob.
I'm afraid that's you. So if you could move to the next slide. So this executive summary, it just indicates that these PG&E rates are continuing to increase. And I do want to be clear, we also purchase a significant portion of our of power from Marin Clean Energy, which is uh uh sent to us through the PG&E transmission lines. But those prices are increasing at that same percentage. Um, we have our solar field that covers our peak demand during the day. But we do still purchase energy from the grid at other times. And this system that Bloom uh Energy would be providing for us is a source for that baseload electricity. And they've done work with other community colleges, most notably, they have two installations with the San Diego Community College District. And we did have conversations with the folks at the San Diego Community College District to, as a reference, uh, for Bloom Energy for this particular system. So what this does, it's a small footprint of um servers. It covers the power usage not provided by the solar. So it's not a substitute for solar, but rather the uh uh provides the power that we don't get from solar. It's a fifteen-year power purchase agreement. We pay Bloom Energy for the power that they produce through this energy server system. We don't own the system. We're not responsible for operating or maintaining the system. And there is no upfront cost to us. So Bloom comes in, they install the system. We buy the fuel that the system uses and we purchase the electricity that it produces from Bloom Energy. Catherine, if we can move to the next slide. This next slide just indicates the Bloom Power Systems, a few of the Bloom Power Systems that are in place. We would be installing a six hundred kilowatt system to meet our needs. So it would probably look similar to what you see in the that middle picture, which is the seven hundred and fifty kilowatt system, uh, that is one of the systems at the San Diego Community College District. Catherine, if we can look to the next slide. This would be located by the tennis courts. So um if if you're oriented here, you see the tennis courts to the left. The one thousand building is to the right. You can see the bridge that connects the one thousand building to the eight hundred building. Um, above that uh site where the uh where the system would be located is the six hundred building, the gymnasium. So it's in that footprint there next to the um, uh, next to the tennis courts. The reason for this location is that it is located near uh um uh a transformer to tie into our electrical system. And then it's also located near uh gas lines, which is the fuel that it will use um to produce the electricity. Catherine, if we could move to the next slide. What this slide is showing us um is our peak usage by day of the week. So this really answers the question, why a six hundred kilowatt system? You can see that with the exception of Friday, I'm sorry, Saturdays and Sundays, which are the lines in yellow at the bottom of that graph, we are in the six hundred kilowatt range for our use of power um during our average days of the week. And so we don't want a system that's any larger than six hundred kilowatts that would be producing more electricity than we need or than we would utilize on a regular basis. And Catherine, can we move to the next slide? So the next slide just indicates what our power savings would be. So the cost of power, I should say, what our savings would be. So it's an average annual savings of two hundred and ten thousand. Over the fifteen-year period of this agreement, it would be just under three point two million dollars in savings to the college. And Catherine, if we could move to the next slide, which is really the last slide providing information. This just shows how that calculation is done. And you can see that the savings in the first few years, because this is based on the fact that the cost that we will, the um, cost of the power from Bloom Energy will remain relatively constant, while the cost of energy from uh the grid will continue to increase. And so the savings are lower, obviously, in the first few years and increase over the life of the agreement. So I guess the key points here are that this will allow us to meet our electric purchase needs, electricity purchase needs that are not supported or not provided by the solar field at this time. It will decrease significantly our cost of purchasing that power. And it does not require any upfront um investment or ongoing investment other than the cost of purchasing the power from uh Bloom Energy and BE Development.
Bob, does it provide any benefits in terms of PSPS, you know, so we're not totally relying on the on the grid?
Unfortunately, it does not. If, in order for us to um uh to address any issues related to PSPS, we would have to be, we would have to be purchasing a system that would take us entirely off the grid.
Right.
That would be more, uh, potentially more expensive for us because we'd be producing more power than we need. And the reality is that in the um, the the PSPS events that happened last year, the main campus never lost power. Um, uh, and probably a significant reason for that is that we're on the same grid as the Napa State Hospital. Um, but we uh we never, we lost power at the south end of campus because that's not on the same grid as Napa State Hospital. So we, during one of the PSPS events, we lost power to the winery, to the visual arts building and to the um uh facilities building at the south end of campus. But the main part of campus did not lose power and we don't have any expectation that the main campus will lose power in future PSPS events.
And then just one more question. In terms of a clean, clean energy that you're touting as as clean energy, can you speak to any of the benefits? They're probably not as uh on par maybe with solar, but um certainly.
Right. They're not on par with solar, but they are twenty percent cleaner than standard PG&E uh electricity generation. And what we're getting from Marin Clean Energy is about ten percent cleaner than PG&E. So what we would generate through this system would be ten percent cleaner than Marin Clean Energy. Thank you.
One quick clarifying question. So we only pay for what we actually use. So if we have, um, because I'm assuming that these numbers are based on our previous usage and there's nobody on campus right now, so I'm guessing there are a lot of lights out. Um, so I I'm assuming that the electric bill's going to be lower than usual for the next six months at least, but that's not going to have any effect on this?
No, it won't. But the good news is that it's going to take them six months to install the system. So um, so we will be probably back up to our typical usage by the time this system is in place.
We can only hope.
Right.
Mr. Parker, any, any safety issues, uh, perceived safety issues? I see the others are fenced. And my second question, looking at the other installations, they seem to be expandable.
So first of all, no safety issues with this. No safety issues with this type of generation of power. And the second question, is it expandable? And the answer is yes, it is. So if we were to determine, working with Bloom Energy, that we, and I would, I would hope this wouldn't be the case, that we would be needing more electrical power. But if that were the case, this would be an expandable system. Yes.
And then any more questions or comments? So are we ready? Could I have entered a motion to adopt the resolution?
Do we need to do them separately?
Yes.
Yes. So a motion to, oh, sorry, Gajen.
You can second.
I'll, I'll, I'll second Trustee Baker's motion on the resolution.
I'll let you go first next time.
Okay, so moved by Trustee Baker and second by Trustee Dodd on adopting the resolution to enter into a contract with BE Energy, with BE Development. Trustee, Trustee Baker?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
Trustee Baldini?
Aye.
And that's an aye for me.
Motion to approve the power purchase agreement with BE Development.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Dodd, second by Trustee Rios. And that is to enter into agreement to purchase. Trustee Baker?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
Trustee Baldini?
Aye.
And that is also an aye for me. So you got your contract, Dr. B. Parker? 9.2 Campus Student Housing Update. Mr. Parker, Dr. Parker?
So Catherine, do you have that slide available?
I can have. I'm sorry, I didn't load it, I guess. Very last minute.
So I'll, I'll tap dance while you're looking for that. So we, the, the main update that we have for you tonight is really talking about where we are in the California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA, process. And so that's the, the big activity that will be taking place over the next 30 days. And so we have, in the CEQA timeline, that preliminary agency stakeholder consultation, it says it's ongoing. An email went out, a, 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 we went out to a number of community groups here in Napa about the campus housing project and more specifically about the CEQA process and the CEQA 30-day public review period that we were about to enter into. That went out on Wednesday, directing people to the district website, to the campus housing page of the district website for additional information, which included the latest renderings as well as some other information about the campus housing. It will also hold a copy of the document that is about to be available for public review. And that's the initial study proposed mitigated negative declaration document. That will be, that 30-day public review period begins Monday, August 17. There will be a notification in the Napa Valley Register on Monday, August 17, letting people know that that 30-day public review period has begun. As I said, we'll have that posted to our campus housing website for review and comments. This is to provide the public with information about any potential environmental effects of the campus housing project. It's a 95-page document. It includes the impacts of construction and the impacts after completion or when the project is in operation. And it includes things like impacts to agriculture and forest resources, impacts to air quality, noise, transportation, utilities and service systems. So many areas that could be impacted as a result of the campus housing project moving forward. As you look at each of those areas, there are items that are identified as having no impact, items identified as less than significant impact, items less than significant impact with mitigation incorporated, and then finally, items that would be potentially significant impact. If you read through the document that will be available on Monday, August 17, there are no areas that are identified as potentially significant impact. Most areas are no impact or less than significant impact. And certain areas are less than significant impact with mitigation incorporated. And so, for example, one of those areas is in transportation. And one of the mitigation items that is listed there is implementing a bike share program to advance transportation issues that might be, that might come about as a result of campus housing. What we are looking to do is to propose a mitigated negative declaration. So you have choices of, there is a negative declaration, which means doesn't have a significant impact. A mitigated negative declaration, which is what we're, we're proposing, is saying that there are some negatives, but they will be mitigated through actions that were taking place. The highest level would be to, to identify or determine that there will be significant impact, that significant effect that will require an environmental impact report. And that is not what we're proposing. So this 30-day public review period happens August 7th, September 15. And then at the end of that period, we will be coming to you at the Board of Trustees meeting on October 8 for adoption of the CEQA, the CEQA mitigated negative declaration plan. Next steps after that, implementation schedule would be, as I think we've reported, we're going to the Division of State Architects, planning to do that in December. We expect that construction will commence in summer of 2021 with a full 2023 completion of construction. So just wanted to let you know that this CEQA process is kicking off and that we will be inviting public review and public comments on the document.
Thank you, Bob. Just got a couple of quick questions. If, you said that the email went out, I don't know if I got it or I just overlooked it, but would it be possible for you or perhaps Holly to, to, to circulate that email that went out? I think you said last week or?
Holly, is, is Holly still on the?
Yes, I am.
Good. And then just one, and nice job covering CEQA. Good job, Bob. As someone who practices in that area of law, I know that Trustee Rios has got a lot of experience as well. But knowing that those documents, the 94-page document, and perhaps there could be some changes to that documented responses to community questions, to, I guess, get to the short of it, is it's going to be a long document. I'm hoping that we can have that document Thursday or Friday before our hearing the week after, so we have adequate time to, to review it because we're going to need to say that we've adequately reviewed that document thoroughly in terms of adopting it before it goes to DSA. So just want to make sure that from an administrative level that we have enough time and not getting it the, the day before the, the hearing.
Absolutely. And really, that's one of the reasons that we chose. So we were working with our CEQA consultant to determine when the 30-day period would begin and when it would end. And the initial proposal was to have it start Monday, August 3, which would have had it ending at the beginning of September. And looking at a board meeting schedule, that the September board meeting was September 10, that would not have been adequate turnaround time for us to make the changes, get it to you, and for you to review it and vote at the September 10 meeting. So that's why we pushed it to August 17, having the end of the 30-day comment period be September 15. That gives us time to address those concerns that were raised and make any changes so that we can have it distributed in advance of the October 8 board meeting for your review before you have to approve it.
Appreciate your thoughtfulness on that. Thank you.
Okay, that, that's the end of my report.
Chair, you're on mute, if you, if you didn't know that.
My puppy was barking. Sorry about that. Student Affairs, number 10, Student Affairs Information Discussion Action Items. 10.1, Approved Agreement with Clark &amp; Associates Educational Consultants and Napa Valley College. Mr. DeHart? Okay. No questions for Mr. DeHart? All righty. So moved by Trustee Baldini.
Second, Trustee Iverson.
First, second by Trustee Iverson. Trustee Baker?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd, I'm sorry, Goff? Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
Trustee Baldini?
Aye.
And that's an aye for me as well. So Mr. DeHart, you're in business.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
11, General Information Discussion Action. A Resolution on Student Equity and Inclusion. Do we have any comments or do we have discussion?
Yes, I have uploaded two public comments received. Here is one. Can we hear it, please? Oh, am I reading?
Do we, do we need to read it or?
Oh, okay, no.
If anyone can read it on their, on their screen, I'm just, for the sake of time, I, I happen to read.
Okay, I'll, I'll go ahead and, I'll go ahead and read one. It was from a member of the embassy faculty and it was received today. And quote, "It has come to my attention that the BOT will be voting on a resolution of student equity. As you said in your talk this morning, this topic is fraught with landmines and I have no desire to become a target for simply voicing my concerns. While I agree with the, with the resolution in principle, I am disturbed by the tenor of the resolution in some regards, disagree with specific items of the resolution as being outside of the purview of the board and may be illegal." Let's start, let's talk legality. The resolution states, "We saw NBC acknowledges barriers that have been historically excluded and prevented equal outcomes of our students," unquote. Equal outcomes are just another way of saying that our grading system will be driven by quotas. My understanding is that quotas are illegal. But worse, it implies that quotas are required because these groups cannot meet the standard in any other way. Do we want equal outcomes or equal opportunity? I think that we want equal opportunity. So I obviously have a problem with the idea of equal outcomes. But going beyond that, grading is a preview of faculty. And this resolution slacks of the BOT interfering with the work of faculty by forcing a grading standard upon us in the form of quotas. I've heard from my faculty about this. They are concerned that this language is coming from the BOT without being reviewed by the academic senate. You will receive pushback from faculty, not based on the general content, but by dictating what is going to occur in the classroom. If the purpose of this resolution is to dismantle systemic racism and ensuring the success of all of the students of color, then it isn't helpful to point fingers and say that it is time to acknowledge that white people have been the architects of a system that unjustly relegates people of color, particularly Black Americans, to the position of second-class citizens, quote, unquote. These words are polarizing and racist. It is a very broad brush that is being applied here and people are offended by it. It is not a good starting point for open and honest discussion to point your finger and tell people that they are personally responsible for the plight of Black Americans because of the color of their skin. You cannot simultaneously say that you want to remove bias and then label the entire segment of our population in such a negative way. It's hypocritical. To be clear, I'm not opposed to the resolution. I am opposed to the segments of the resolution that are beyond the scope of the BOT to enforce or implement and the use of language that is unethical to the purpose of the resolution. I would encourage you to seriously consider changes in the resolution before it's adopted. A resolution that is seeking inclusivity and equity should itself be inclusive and equitable. In my opinion, the current incarnation is neither. I do have to say though, that before we arrived at this meeting, we reviewed about five or six resolutions adopted from other education, from other colleges. We took some of that language and applied it to this, but most of it, we wanted, we wanted it to be more local-directed. And so, do we have another comment? Napa Valley College Board of Trustees Regular Meeting, August 13, 2020. Public comment, item 12.1, Resolution of Student Equity and Inclusion. As you might be aware, the board resolution for tonight's meeting, while it's taken a whole, as a whole, is appropriate. The specific singling out of the police academy may be quite damaging. The quote, "The board will hold the police academy accountable." It's troubling inasmuch as all of those items listed are already what they and any staff are doing on a regular basis. Greg Miraklia is currently in the process of creating specific changes to the ABMJ program as it relates to community policy. I am also aware that the conversation at last week's meeting regarding the resolution did not receive any public comment. The language is in the current, the language in the current resolution makes it sound as though the academy is doing things incorrectly or at least needs to change what they are doing. In fact, the academy has been loaded by posts for their proactive training relating to cultural sensitivity, de-escalation, and many of the aid can't wait. Police training reforms that have come and led to light in recent months.
I have a comment.
I have a comment. I need to get my mic working well tonight. But if we could go back to the last public comment. And again, I defer to the lawyers on our board. I never thought it was the intention that student equity had anything to do with grading. So I'm a little taken aback and whether that's a thing, I'm just, I'm taken aback.
I think that that's coming out of our use of the word outcomes, since outcomes tends to be, you know, we're talking about learning outcomes is something that is part of the accreditation and is a part of the academic and the grading, but that wasn't our intent in the use of that word. And I didn't see it this way at all. It never even occurred to me. I don't necessarily have a problem with changing it to equal opportunity, but I also don't have a problem with leaving it as is because I know that that was not our intent and I don't I don't see that as being, I mean, because we're all, we talk all the time about, it's all about the students. It's about the students regardless if you are a faculty, regardless if you are a custodian, wherever your position is, it's about the students and it's about their their ability to succeed and their outcomes. And so we all contribute to that and it's not just about grading. And for us to be able to say this as a board, we're saying that this is something that we consider to be important and that we want to see done throughout the organization, but it's not specifically about grading and it's certainly not about quotas.
Right, and that was my takeaway. I don't know if we need to change the wording so our intent doesn't get confused. But on the second point, as far as the second quote, I think this person has a point. And I think maybe we need to rethink rewording that. Because I think that there is a point that you know, it's fine to fight for equal, you know, equality, but then still label a group or generalize might be shooting ourselves in the foot. Those are just my thoughts.
And which, what was, I refer into, I'm sorry?
The second, the second comment about the section about white people being architects. I personally stand by it. I think it's true. It's not about generalizing, it's about history. And we're not saying individual people. I think I even said in the meeting last week, I'm a white person. I have benefited from racism. Does that make me racist? I hope not, but I mean, that's one of the reasons why we included the, you know, whether or not it was, I forget, unaware or I'm not looking at the actual document right now, but it's, the system exists. The system was deliberately built by white people. And it's up to us to fix it. And we're not saying that individual people are responsible. We're saying as a group and that is history. That is not what, that's not an opinion.
Agreed with that? Any more discussion around?
I was just, I think Beth was gonna say something, but. Go ahead, Beth.
No, I just said, you know, I'd forgotten about that piece and the way it's worded in the document, it does so that that does make sense generally.
Trustee Goff, your reception, I don't know if it's just my computer or what.
No, it's mine as well.
It's my spot. So I didn't really find a better spot, but I kind of got most of that.
I didn't.
I didn't really get any of it.
I didn't either. Do you want me to try again?
Oh, we can hear you now.
Okay, I'm struggling tonight with my little spot. I was just saying that I agree with trustee Baker that in the context of the document, it is pretty clear that it is historically based. So that makes sense. I was agreeing with her. Did you get that?
Yes, we got it.
Thank you. That's all.
Thank you.
And if we want to move on to the other comment about the Police Academy, again, just to provide some context for where that statement came from or how it developed, I should say. When we were reviewing all of the different examples from different colleges across the state, looking for good wording and things that we agreed with and would wanted to build upon. One of the schools that we looked at their resolution and I had it open was Riverside Community College District, which also has a law enforcement academy and that is also very well respected. And they had included a section in their resolution addressing that. And again, we discussed it at the last meeting where the main reason, we're gonna hold all of our departments accountable. We want to hold regardless of what the program is, but this whole conversation, this global conversation was instigated by a police event. And so I think that if we, it would be remiss for us to not talk about our police department because we do have a responsibility to continue to turn out good police officers. So it's not about saying that they're not doing a good job. It's about saying we are gonna continue to hold you accountable to what you say you're going to do. Because that wording came from their website, their mission statement. We are not saying we're gonna make you do this. They're saying they already do it. And all we're doing is saying we're gonna hold you accountable for it. And I personally feel like it's, I don't feel like it's inappropriate. Again, I'm just one voice.
Jennifer, in hindsight though, and I understand that, you know, we said policy as a board of trustees. But by the same token, you know, when we say we will hold accountable, it's I don't know, sometimes it may have the connotation that we are going to tell them how to how to do their job. So, and we're not supposed to, as trustees, we're not supposed to because only they know how to operate a program such as our Police Academy. So.
We can play with the wording if you wanted to, but again, it says we are going to hold them accountable as the board. And the buck stops here. I mean, we, I mean, well, it's Ron and then we could fire him if he's doing a crap job. But it's under his leadership that we want it to happen. We do hold, we are the ones that are holding it accountable. We are the representatives elected to these positions. And we, and we're saying that we're going to hold them accountable to their goals, not our goals.
Their mission statement, yeah.
Again, it's, you know, you can pick it apart. If people are truly unhappy about it, the resolution can stand without it, but I prefer to keep it in.
And we support the Police Academy's goals?
Of course we do.
As opposed to, as opposed to, oh my goodness. Hold them accountable?
That we support their goals? We could do that.
Or Madam Chair, if I may?
Oh, please, do something.
We will continue to hold our Police Academy. We've always held them accountable and will continue to hold our Police Academy accountable.
I like that too.
Okay.
I do, you know, I think what the chair was getting at is perhaps maybe just some negative connotations. I don't believe it's, there's the comment related to the board getting involved in the academic affairs of Police Academy. It was more, I think, this negative reaction, I think, to the word accountable. I don't have a good solution. I just, I want to say that I'm sensitive to it, so I would. And I'm also, and I completely understand the underlying objectives and intent of this, of this language as of worth and there's no means to, you know, scold the Police Academy, I think, in any way. But I also want to be sensitive, I think, to a concern that was raised in our Police Academy. And I think now more than ever, we need to be there to not scold, we need to be there to support. So I, you know, would be open to the idea about considering some alternative language there. And I think it is that, that specific word accountable. I don't know if anyone has any ideas to offer, but I would be open to those.
What if we said, what if we had to combine the idea that Michael had and it was our, and say we'll continue to support the Police Academy's goals of?
I like that.
Does that look like to anybody?
You're gonna end up with two ofs there. Or did you cross one? I can't tell.
The goals of teaching, right after.
Yeah, we're good.
Yeah, we can cross that off.
Thank you.
And, you know, I need to say that, and I think that the rest of the boards feels the same way. We are extremely proud of the Police Academy and their teachings, but extremely proud. And so, you know, we're just trying to support you. We're trying to highlight and to acknowledge you. Any more comments?
Why review Raphael's? Are we all good with it?
You know, talk about two offs. I don't know, I was looking at it and there's greater greater knowledge about diversity and then we celebrate diversity. I understand, but can we say to gain greater, greater knowledge about and celebrate diversity?
To gain greater knowledge and to celebrate diversity. Gain greater knowledge about and to celebrate. I think you're on the right track.
Yeah. And, man, okay, that works for me.
Yes, perfect.
I don't, this is trustee Iverson. I don't, I support the resolution and I obviously want to see this get done, but I still feel like it would be necessary to have the feedback from academic senate or the district at large. Just, it's more inclusive rather than just the board throwing this out there and this is our interpretation. It is like trustee God said with the words accountable. I don't know if the rest.
Could we hear some comments from Dr. Tahada if she feels so moved?
A resolution is the voice of the entity that is putting it together. It is subject to shared governance because it is your voice. You are the board's taking a position. So in that respect, the academic senate cannot approve a resolution from the board. We can write our own resolution and take a position that may align with the board or not. But a resolution by definition is the board's voice to the public and the college community. So in terms of bringing it to the senate for review, would be like, we're not the editing hand of the board. So by definition, this is subject to something like governance, which is the actual procedures of implementation. So there is a difference. And so I urge us to be careful and to not decide of whatever your purpose was in creating this document. Because it's not in terms of governance, it's in terms of your enacting your position and letting your position be known to the public that you are accountable to. I'm just wanting to make that point. And because I'm an English teacher, I just noticed something. I'm sorry, I don't want to overstep my bounds here. But on the resolve, right underneath the red print, it shouldn't read Napa Valley College acknowledges. It should be the Board of Trustees of Napa Valley College. And I'll be quiet now. Sorry, that's my English teacher ease and I apologize for my neuroses.
No, no, those are the comments.
I mean, this is right in line with what I was saying when we reviewed this, that this is the board's resolution. It is not any other constituency's resolution. And it is what we, we are projecting about what our goals are for the institution. It's not about, it's not, we're not, we're not trying to direct grading. We're not trying to direct any specific actions by faculty or anybody else. Ron and the administration will look at this and, you know, make sure that the things that, initiatives and things that the administration is carrying out, you know, align with this resolution. But he's not, we're not telling him to go institute any kind of grading policy or anything else that would affect the faculty or academics. So I disagree with trustee Iverson about sending this out for review and comment by other groups.
I agree with that statement.
I understand what trustee Rios is saying and I appreciate the comments from Dr. Tahada. I just, I guess where I was going, just so that you guys understand, I just feel like it's that much more powerful that it's something, I don't know. I guess that's why I was looking for feedback.
Well, if I, if I may, I was going to wait till after we actually adopted this, but you know, we have said, one of the statements in here is that, you know, what is it? Plotitudes without action are no better than silence. So it is, it doesn't stop here. We don't just say this and frame it and stick it on the wall. We have to, we have to make it actionable. And that's where we do work with staff and we do work with faculty or we instruct leadership to do that. And to come up, I mean, I can envision like creating some sort of a think tank or something, you know, where people can come together and talk about ideas and how this might happen. I hate focus groups and task force and committees, but we can call it a think tank and I'll be happy. And, but, you know, we also, we've already made a lot of progress toward that under our leadership and also with guidance from the chancellor's office. So we have things that we can build upon, but it doesn't stop here.
Exactly.
And also, just since we are going through there, I noticed we do have a few places where we're inconsistent with our capitalization. I saw one where board was not capitalized. It was also in the red version. And just also whether or not we're gonna say NBC or Napa Valley College, if we're gonna put it out there, you know, we just need to make it.
Motion for Dr. Tahada to approve read.
A second.
Thank, well, thank you, that, that was good, that was good conversation. And, and I'm glad that we were able to clear up the misconceptions of, um, you know, that were voiced in, in the first concern and, and, um, because definitely we, we wanna work with, with all of our, um, roots in the college, and so, you know. So anyway, if there's no more discussion, can I have a motion to approve the, um, the, um, resolution?
Is this coming back after it's, um?
No, we'd be approving it.
Yeah, we're approving it, great, with the corrections, but, um, yeah, with the corrections that we need.
If I may, I think it'd be lovely if trustee Baker could, uh, make the first motion.
I would be happy, I, I, so moved.
Can I have a second?
A second.
And that, that was, that was trustee Goff?
Yes, please.
Okay, note by trustee Baker to approve the resolution with the minor corrections. Uh, second by trustee Goff. Uh, who does, does that have to do this? Trustee Baker?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
Trustee Baldini?
Aye.
And that's an aye for me as well. Thank you all for, um, you know, spending almost three hours of your day on the sixth to come up with this. Very much appreciated. So we go on to 12th, board reports. Scanning committee and other apor-, uh, appointment reports. Do we have a report from us?
Uh, we do not, no, we have not met yet.
Um, the W Foundation?
Uh, no, we're.
That was, I'm sorry, the Vidic, Vidic was working. No report, trustee Baker? Okay, Legislative Affairs, trustee Goff?
We have not met yet, we plan on meeting next month. The legislature has reconvened and our wonderful Holly Dawson, uh, will be getting us together and talking about some propositions and bring them forward, uh, hopefully in September.
Thank you. Um, and audit and finance, when are we scheduled to meet?
Um, not until next month.
Thank you, real property committee?
Yes, we, we had a meeting, uh, uh, at Bumpy Camp. Uh, I was there, Michael Baldini was there, Dr. Kraft, Parker, Matt Christensen, uh, Catherine was there, and Chief Wade. Um, we went up there, uh, I had never seen the property. I think Michael has several times, given that he's the, the eldest, uh, of the trustees serving on the board. Uh, but, uh, we went out there, it was nice, nice and warm. Uh, hiked through the property a little bit and, and, um, uh, Matt was able to point out, uh, a number of features. Uh, obviously, the, the caretaker's house sits out there and then the old orchard and some other, uh, areas that had been farmed in the past. Um, and the, we were able to see the results of all the work, the clearing that was done, um, over a period of, uh, God, I think it was maybe about a year, um, after the, the fire and, and, um, everything. The, the property looks, looks good, it's nice and clean. The purpose of the meeting was really, I think, for us to understand, we've been, we've talked about this in the past at the board meetings and, and about the property and what the future of the property might be. Uh, but I think it's important to actually see and understand, you know, physically, what we're talking about. Um, and have a, be more familiar with it on that level as we start to get into, uh, a planning process, uh, for that property. And Ron can, can talk about this a little bit more, but I, I think where we're headed is to start that process of actually planning, um, for whatever activities might take place out there and implementing that plan. But I think we, we need to start that process and I think the, the first step that the board should probably consider is to, to get, uh, Dr. Kraft and the administration, um, to start that planning process, uh, probably as we've done with the, uh, Up Valley Campus and, and have a, a public forum to gather information, opinion, let the public, you know, know, uh, that it's out there, what it is, and, and see what kind of ideas come up for the property and start to evaluate, uh, those, uh, that might be viable and move forward for, with an actual plan, uh, for whatever type of development, you know, educational development that may be. Um, so, uh, Dr. Kraft, um, do you wanna talk about that process a little bit?
Certainly, um, I, I think that the, um, as a typical process that we use for the Upper Valley Campus is good. We have existing plans that all go back, like the Upper Valley Campus, decades. Um, and maybe even more than that, decades and decades, that address, um, Bumpy Camp or Mount Peter Farm, as we're calling it, and, um, um, I, I think it would be excellent to move forward, staff to kinda coalesce, bring those things around, bring those plans together, do a community forum as you're suggesting, the same kind of format, um, and probably a different group of invitation, and then see, see what we see. I, I think it's really important to get some input. I, I think it has great, um, great, great possibilities for teaching learning and, um, on many aspects. You can just nail it on, on that, it's good. I can bring that back and keep it kind of front and center. Um, but next month, I could, I could certainly lay out for the board, um, kind of a timeline and steps that we're, that we're talking about and what we have already done, you know, I'm not gonna wait until next month to actually begin some of the processes, so.
I, I think that would be a, a great, uh, great start, uh, assuming the board is, is in agreement with that. Um, so that we can, you know, actually do something, uh, and utilize these, uh, resources that we have out there.
No, I, I, I think it's great and I think that, you know, we should, we should proceed with that. The, what, after, um, after Kraft to do what he just mentioned.
Consider it, um, underway.
Mr. Chair, Real Property Committee Chair, Mr. trustee Rios? Did you include the, the, uh, staffer, Robert Parker, as being present?
I did.
Did you? Okay. Thank you.
Oh, good, we had the money guy there. Okay, so is that, is that the report?
Yes, it is.
Thank you very much. Um, Matt Christensen, distinguished teaching.
Yes, I had the, uh, opportunity to meet with Sarah Parker and we had a great conversation about how, uh, the, it might, uh, we might be able to enhance and improve the, uh, process of, um, submitting nominations for that. So, uh, hopefully we'll have that all, or she'll have all, who, what am I saying? I'm not gonna go, I'm hopefully gonna be able to take a look at that and really, our goal is to maintain the integrity of that, uh, award. So I'm looking forward to, uh, that new process, uh, coming up in the spring. That's all.
Thank you for that report. Uh, Napa Valley College Foundation, trustee Iverson?
I think the biggest thing to report out from the foundation is that we now have our, um, executive director, Jessica Tomlinson, has, um, accepted our offering as our new executive director. Is the biggest.
Oh, good, 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 that's, that is good news. Thank you. Um, 12.2, future agenda items. And I have a request by trustee, uh, Baker? For a screenshot of something?
Sorry, I'm trying to get myself unmuted. Uh, for, I have two things, actually. One is an item I'd kinda like to bring back and the, and the other one is, um, I'm just curious, um, if we have had any conversation with the county regarding the use, uh, potential use of the campus as a shelter, um, given the COVID i- um, issues and whether or not that's something that we might wanna try to be proactive about of like, you know, how, uh, I know that it's pretty much the way that the agreement is that we basically just hand them the keys and walk away. But, uh, but just to make certain that whatever it is that they may need in terms of a setup, if that, because we're looking at fire season coming up right now and it's possible that we might end up having to, to serve in that function and just wanna make certain that we're prepared. So I just wanted to put that out there and see if that's something that maybe we could contact the county and just find out if they're prepared. And so my other, my other thing is, um, I, I'm, I'm very, very happy, as I'm sure, um, Raphael is, as well, that I do not have to go door to door with a stick to push the doorknob, um, or push the bell. But, um, but in, before I knew that I was going to not, that I would not be, um, opposed on the ballot, I was looking at, uh, the things that I campaigned on four years ago just to kinda see if I had, um, hopefully made some, helped make some progress on some of those things. And I'm very happy to say that we have made progress on just about everything. But we do have one that was kinda, um, a big one for me and I, and I have failed to, uh, to make this an issue. So I have a couple of screenshots and I don't know, Catherine, are you putting them up or am I putting them up?
I think you're going to.
Okay, well, let me see if I can do that really fast, hold on, darn it. Okay, so I need to get it in the right place, give me two seconds, guys, I've got five billion windows open here. Um, I wanted to show, I'm gonna move this over here and then I'm gonna get this one over here as well.
Sorry, is this a future agenda item or is it?
It is, it's show and tell to prepare for a future agenda item. So we'll put it that way, okay, so let me get back in here so that I can share. I'm getting to show my zoom off now, okay, so share, screen, two, here we go. I wanted to show you this one right here. This is, I don't know if any of you are familiar with this picture, it's our, our website. Um, it probably looks familiar. Um, but what this actually is, is a picture of our website from 2016. So this is four years ago, this is from the Wayback Machine, if you have never played with that. And then this is our current website. It's almost identical. One of the things that I was really hoping we could make progress on within the last couple of years was updating our website. It does not mobile optimize, it does not, the search function does not work. There's a lot of issues that were already problematic and now that we are 90% online, I think, I mean, this is our front doorstep and we really need to put some effort into this. So I would like to have a report at least come back to tell what is happening. Is something happening and what are the plans to, um, hopefully move this forward? So that is my item, and I can stop share.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, how, anyway, we'll put it, we'll put it on the agenda and we'll discuss it later when, when we come to it. Um, next is?
I did have a future agenda request here.
Please, 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 trustee Iverson.
Going back to, uh, Dr. Kraft's report and then also in light of trustee Dodd and Baker's comment on the Upper Valley Forum, I think it was great getting the feedback. There were some really positive comments and ideas that came out of that. Um, my biggest walkaway was that not only would we benefit as a college in terms of community outreach and resources, but there also appears to be some natural synergies with the city of St. Helena on programs, internships, possibly student work possibilities and community ed expansion. Um, so, in light of that, I, I would like to ask the board to consider putting it as an agenda item for our next me- meeting that specifically directs staff to explore and open the conversation with the city of St. Helena and how we might accommodate, you know, some of their needs in the community up there.
Madam Chair.
With the air global pandemic and everything that we're looking at right now, so.
Thank you, trustee Baldini. So, and that's a, uh, cause I saw considered, let's put it on the agenda for discussion. So that's, that's another future, any more future agenda items?
I'm just wondering if there are any on the list, since the list is not open, were there any still pending?
I think there's a few.
Baldini, of course.
The student of 18, too.
You're not getting one, I think is the, the answer.
We start calling you Dr. Baldini, will you be happy?
So what is happening with these items?
Um, should I?
On the, um, diversity hiring and recruiting to reflect diversity of student population, um, Charo has been working on that, and this is not a report tonight, but we'll, we'll come back and I, we're prepared to, um, talk about that next, next time, Charo, I think at least to some extent, correct?
I can definitely provide some general information, but what we're provide, what we're preparing is the renewal of our EEO plan that is due every three years. And so, once it goes through shared governance, then it will come to the board for approval. But I'd be more than happy to provide some information when of our six.
Would be more inclusive, I think that was Jennifer's, yeah, it'd be more inclusive, Jennifer, if you can wait for that, but it's, that is coming, um, soon, right? It's, we're on schedule for that, okay. And grounds of facilities, I don't know what we, what we're doing on that one to come back, back to. It's, it's kind of always there, it's an in-progress piece, Bob, I don't know, maybe.
It is, and I, I think one of my questions, you know, was just, do we, I know that for some of the buildings, we have scheduled maintenance that is supposed to be happening regularly. And one of my questions was, well, do we have that for grounds too? You know, the, the hardscape especially, we're completely just breaking and, you know, we're lifting up and those sorts of things.
Certainly, we can do, we can do that, correct, Bob?
Yeah.
We can, yeah.
So, um, and, and, and there's no reason to wait, we can put that information next month?
Yes, we can.
All right, so we can do it for next month and get that one. And the Riffel Heart Services, so.
Would that include, uh, Raphael's, uh, Bear Fountain?
It, yes. It will focus on the Bear Fountain and the Japanese one.
And we have, we have, uh, we have a fountain there, you know, it should be doing something.
Love that fountain, but I wish it did something, hasn't it?
Yeah.
I was, I wasn't aware it was a fountain, I thought it was just a statue.
It is a statue.
It worked, it worked when I was a student. They're standing out there, people.
Bring all of this to you and, and, um, to the best of ability and fill, fill us up, you know, to, with what we have.
Great, thank you.
Okay, and I, I wrote down a, a website information and the city of St. Helena kind of information, um, next time. Was that a specific call, was that an action item or an information item that you were asking for? Um, trustee Iverson, how, how far did you wanna go between now and next?
Um, I, I mean, I would like to see it come back next month.
Yeah, as an information or, or action item?
I think if, if we could.
I think it sounded more like it was an action, that, or at least a, a, a potential action to direct staff because we've already got, um, a placeholder for information. Um, so if the intent is to really move it forward, it could potentially be an act. Um, so if the intent is to really move it forward, it could potentially be an action.
I agree with that, yeah.
I think an action item on, yeah, directly, you know, directing staff specifically to explore the conversation.
Yes, I like that.
I'll, I'll work with the team here and, and the chair of, um, massage exactly what would be appropriate.
I mean, I'm looking, I mean, some of the things that I've thought about, I mean, let's leasing and providing resources for the next several years that address the needs of the community. So however you guys staff and go about it is what I would like to see in that.
I, I think, um, I think I would like to see where kind of this whole planning process is at. I'm not sure sitting here right now that, you know, I want to go in next meeting to say, yes, go talk to the, the city. I want to know kind of where our planning process is and if this is the right time to do it.
I will work with the chair and then she can work with you all to.
Okay.
You have a little time to get there, Rafael, so I, I'm, I'm hearing you.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for all that input. Um, uh, board reports. Trustee and board chair reports. Uh, trustee Baker? Okay, I'll, we'll come back to her. Trustee Dodd?
I, now it's muted, though, you can come back.
You know, it's where you did participate in the Upper Valley, uh, community forum and, uh, chimed in a little bit, poked my head to the door and some of the, the Flex Day, um, seminars yesterday and today and this morning and, um, you participated in various workshops on, uh, equity and inclusivity and, and, um, have, uh, yeah, feeling very enriched by those, uh, conversations and, uh, appreciate the fact of our, our resolution that today to kind of cap that off and, and continue that and continue, uh, continue that work.
Thank you. Trustee Baker?
Yes, I don't really have a report. I, I also just, uh, did a couple of meetings and things, but I just want to say, I, if, if, I, I assume that the, uh, faculty and staff of NBC are as crazy busy as, um, the NVUSD has been. Um, I've been working 12 plus hour days for the last month trying to get ready for next Thursday and, um, I bet I have a lot of faith in all of you and just want to say thank you for all the effort and work that you've been putting in, extra effort and work that I know that you're having to put in. And, uh, this is gonna be hard as heck, uh, but my hope is that once we all kind of get into a routine and the dust settles and we get, we'll find some comfort level that will be great. It'll be different, but it'll be great. But my goodness, it's been hard. So, um, thank you all for, I'm sure, um, a lot of valiant efforts and sleepless nights.
Yeah.
Yeah. It sounded like that by, um, uh, Dr. Ted Haddad's report, so yes, I'm with you. Thank you for all the work. Um, trustee Goff?
Yeah, I would definitely echo that, uh, what trustee Baker said. Um, I, I, I'm doing similar things and, and it's, it's an uphill battle, but I see a way, where I think we'll make it. Um, I also want to thank all those people in St. Helena who participate in the forum. It was very evident that, uh, the feeling up there is that the Napa Valley College campus or center, whatever you call it, is a vital, um, institution up there and it's important for us to realize that and to work with them. So I'm excited that it's, that we're paying attention and that hopefully we will, uh, come together and bring about something that will be really terrific for that community. Other than that, I'm, I'm ready to go next week. So best of luck to everybody starting.
Thank you. Trustee Iverson?
Just echo the sentiments of my fellow trustees on all the hard work that everybody's been doing at the campus, so thank you.
Trustee Rios?
Um, I also, uh, listened in on the, uh, Upper Valley Campus Forum and I just, uh, I was very happy about the way it was handled and, and how it went off. I think it was very well organized and, uh, uh, everything went very smoothly, uh, and I, I think it was great to hear from, from the community. Um, so I, I hope the, the process continues and, and we can, you know, find some resolutions to a lot of these questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Baldini?
Well, there is an echo in here and I'll repeat that, thank you. And, um, congratulations Rafael and Jennifer and I don't know if I missed, who I missed, somebody else. But as, as we get to know one another and doing these Zoom calls, um, you know, it's, it's kind of difficult to miss being together with all of you. But just a, a little bit of perspective on, on my viewpoints, uh, I've been influenced very greatly by, um, you know, the family. And I have two, uh, nieces that are lesbian. I have a nephew that's gay. I have a nephew married to an African American woman. I have another nephew married to a Japanese American. My sister's married to an African Frenchman. My daughter is married to a black man from Harlem. And probably what, what causes more, uh, discussion in our family is the political, uh, side of things, Democrat, independent, green and Republicans all mixed together. So it's, uh, and, and military as well. So it's been a, um, interesting time these last couple of months, but, you know, but I'm very hopeful that moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Um, and my report, um, I attended the, uh, the forum. It was very good to hear that, uh, we could easily accommodate, um, the requests that the St. Helena community had for the Upper Valley Campus and, um, possibly accommodate the, the city of St. Helena's needs. So that's, that's very encouraging. Um, I was at the session this morning, participated in the session this morning welcoming our, uh, faculty back, um, and it, it, it was, it was very good. It, it was very well presented and, um, again, you know, all that they have to get used to with COVID, all the needs to be reprogrammed and, and, uh, working with the faculty and, and students and, um, administrators, thank you for all we do to, to facilitate this for faculty. You also are, are working tirelessly to make this work. Thank you all for, for all this and, um, yeah, it's gonna get more interesting, but hey, we can do it. Um, so that was my report. Uh, is there anything else that we need to discuss? Okay, then we adjourn at 7:39 and our next meeting is September 10th. Don't forget, I have a date with you guys on the 10th.
Thank you everyone.
All right, you bring the wine, right?
I'll bring the wine. Or the coca cola, whatever, I don't know.